As we get started here, there are note cards on the table. You can write those down. We have eight questions that we had passed out to the candidates. So we'll see if we can get through those first. But once we get going, if we have time, we will take questions. We want them written down. The staff will collect them and then we'll make sure we don't have it duplicate 100 times or something. So please, if you have a question, please write it down and get it to either Brianna or myself. Thank you. I don't know. Have all the candidates had a chance to grab a white tee?
Yes, thank you.
We'd like to have all the candidates come in. There's no order. We weren't going to book place cards or anything. Come on up and sit at the head table here. What we're going to do is maybe start off with maybe ask each candidate to give us a couple of minutes, who they are, maybe how long they've been to town, and what they're hoping to accomplish. If it turns into a long dissertation, I'll turn off the microphone. So Chris, when we get started, since you're on this end of the table and I've got the microphone close to you, why don't you start with just a quick introduction yourself?
Hi, everybody. Nice to see you all. My name's Chris Bubser, and I have, well, I'll start with saying that I first came to Mammoth Labor Day 1991, when I came here to go to school at UCLA. And I couldn't believe that people actually could live here. So fast forward to 2005 or '06, I can't remember, but exactly the wrong time ever to get a place in Mammoth. My family and I got a place. My kids grew up on the ski team. And just to, you know, make it clear, my husband and I have lived here full-time since 2020, took the opportunity to be here. And so I am running for town council because, like all of you, I love Mammoth. And I want to make sure that, you know, as the world moves forward and we have so many dollars coming from the federal and state governments for places like ours for wildfire mitigation, for workforce housing, and all the other opportunities that we see before us, I want to make sure that the dollars come here to Mammoth and not to somewhere else. And so I hope to be able to accomplish that. And thank you so much for taking the time to be here to talk to us.
Hi, everyone. I want to thank the chamber for hosting this forum. It's a great opportunity to speak to all of my fellow candidates. And thank you to all of you for being here today. I really appreciate you taking time out of your day to be involved in this important local election. My name's Betsy Truex. I moved here with my family in 2010 in the middle of Eliza Ridge. I had never been to Mammoth Lakes before. In fact, being from the East Coast, I hadn't heard much about Mammoth Lakes before my family came here in 2010. And within hours of arriving here, I really fell in love with the beauty of this place and also the people who made my family and me feel so incredibly welcome. My daughter, Pat, is a sophomore at Mammoth High School. And I'm really pleased and privileged to have been able to live here for the past 12 years. And I'm running for town council because I'm sure, like everyone on this side, I truly love this place. And I've spent the last decade, I've been very privileged to be able to be very involved in our community as a Girl Scout leader, working for the Mammoth Lakes Foundation, serving on the Towns Park and Recreation Commission, all of the things that, when you have time and you live here, you're able to participate in. So I really just want to see this community keep moving forward. I understand how town council works. I've spent a lot of time working with our local leaders, and I just look forward to the opportunity to continue to serve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. My name is John Webber. I am the only incumbent, the only incumbent, but also a very proud incumbent. I moved to Mammoth Lakes on July 4th of 2000. I spent many years working in an advocacy capacity, working on trails and recreation activities. Came onto the town council in 2014. And I'm running for reelection again because I've just been so inspired by the really excellent work that the council has done over these last years, that the town has done. And I really have a profound sense that this is really the moment for Mammoth Lakes, for this community. And I feel that I would be somewhat irresponsible if I were to step away from the continuity and experience and things I've learned over the years. When I was first elected council, the shadow, the dark shadow of the bankruptcy was hanging over all of our heads. Council was kind of tepid. I mean, dude, look how much trouble Bill was got in. But in these intervening eight years, really, really important things have happened. And I think the community is coalesced around the work that we're all doing. And it's just a great honor to be able to be working with other council members to bring to life the vision this community has for itself. We may not even realize the vision that we have, but things are going in the right direction. I'm eager to work with two other members of this group, to work with Bill and Sarah, and to keep moving these things forward. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amanda Rice, and I moved to Mammoth in 2006. And I am a small business owner in town, and I'm also a parent to two young kids that go to the elementary school here. I decided to run for town council because I really feel that our housing crisis is just, I just can't imagine that it can get much worse. And so although the current town council is working on the parcel and a few other projects in town, I just really feel passionate about housing. And I think that we, as a town, we need to come together and solve this problem immediately. And I would like to be involved in solving this problem instead of just complaining about it. So I feel drawn to run for town council to help the families in town that are really getting squeezed out. Thanks.
How's everybody doing today? Good, good. Thanks for having me. I really appreciate it. And I take this opportunity quite seriously. In fact, more serious than anything I've ever tried to accomplish in my life. This battle that I see forming, none of you know I've been kind of interested. But I'm running because I see a significant problem with the amount of towns managed. I see a significant problem in the divide between the community and the members of law enforcement. I see a continuous divide in applying particular programs that create the divide, throwing out terms like equity. Last time I checked, throughout history of this world, equity's been used throughout communist agendas, throughout socialist agendas. Equity's been the driving stake in division tactics in the history of this world. And it's happening right here in this town. You're creating a circumstance where there's some type of racial divide here. It doesn't exist, not that I can see. The fact that 50% of the labor force is from a foreign land, a foreign country just south of here, I find it hard to believe that there's a problem of racism and equity in this town. But it seems that a lot of the public officials here want to push that notion. So I'm here to make some changes that I should. Housing is an issue. I agree. There's a lot of land available here that we can take and probably do some things which turn around, rather than destroying trees and chronic encroaching on people's property that's, I mean, right next door, right next door to several houses and businesses. We destroyed, how many countless trees? 100? 200 trees for that development? And there's been quite a few debacles with it as well. I'm taking advice and influence from the people that are stakeholders here, both the county and the town. I'm listening to people that have lived here for 25, 30 years. They're unhappy. Those are the voices that I'm listening to. So you'll be seeing more of me. Whether I win or lose this election, you'll be seeing more of me.
My name is Cleveland Hall, and I have served on a town council before. So I feel as though running again kind of proves that I do have a good sense of timing because my term ended right when the Zoom era had just started. The Zoom atmosphere really didn't connect, I know myself and I think a lot of other people. That was a really tough time to get through. But I know that now that we are back and being able to work in person, be together, we have so many exciting changes coming up for the town of Mammoth Lakes. And now is a time that there are things right, wrong, or indifferent that I would like to be very involved in. I have lived here for 30 years. I married my husband, Ryan Jones, and we have a son, Blaze, who's now 22, and he has gone through the school system here. And I think that I do have a little bit different take on the town of Mammoth because we're not very, although my husband was, I'm not very sport oriented. I did raise a child who neither skis nor snowboards in this town, but he will take you on any game of chess. So I think I do represent a part of the community that isn't able, for physical reasons, financial reasons, to enjoy the mountain the way they want to. And I really would like just to keep in touch with the people who have made Mammoth so wonderful all the time. And we want to retain these people than in our community. And I hope to do that. Thank you.
Why don't you hold on to that, Cleveland? And we'll start at that end down there. What I'm going to do is I'm going to put a timer for about four minutes. I hope most of these questions can be answered at that. So as we get going, but the first question is, town council benefits greatly from a diverse and balanced set of council members. What unique skill, background, or perspective do you believe you would bring to the council? How do you think you would integrate with and complement the existing council members? So Cleveland, if you want to start first.
Okay. You know, I kind of realized I was looking down at that question when I was doing my introductions. So one thing, I am going to leave early because I do have a job that I have to get to. So if I get up and leave, I just didn't want you guys to think I was being rude. The unique skill and background, having served on town council and my term was four and a half years because it got extended due to the change in the dates of the election. I would have to say, I didn't work with anybody. And we really have fine candidates. So this is something, but I don't always agree with everyone. And I think that that's very important, that we have a council that will challenge each other on different subjects and bring about, what about this? If you have a town council that's voting five on every, I am, there's something a little bit wrong. You need a different voice, even if it's an unpopular one. So I'm not scared to be unpopular. And my perspective is just, again, a long-term local looking to keep and honor the locals that we have and not give them any more reasons to abandon our beautiful place. So thank you.
So it's way back so you can answer.
Yeah, that was a good timing.
Yeah, that was a good timing. Right. So what answer, Chris, number one, number one?
Question one that we had about the town council, the balance and diversity of council members.
Well, I spent roughly 10 to 15 years in foster homes, living with just about every race you can imagine in this country. About every culture, every menu, every kind of lifestyle. So I developed an appreciation for that. So I don't exclude anybody. I take everybody for their character. Not by what they say, but by how they act. And I'll do that during town council. I'll do that during any type of board I get assigned to, any type of committee I get assigned to, any type of referendum I have to be a part of, any type of agenda I need to be a part of. I'll judge the character of the people involved and the status that they wish to in that.
Thank you.
Oh, did you just want to come up?
Okay. Okay. Number one. I am a business owner and I am a parent. You know, those are, I feel like I'm good at wearing different hats. I've lived in this town for 16 years. I came here working as a waitress. So I've definitely been on both sides of, you know, working paycheck to paycheck and then also being a business owner and having to manage everything and manage people and, you know, work with lots of different people in different, in different places. I also, I feel that I am a creative problem solver and I work well with others. So I'm very good at listening to both sides and coming up with solutions that are appropriate and that meet everyone's needs. I'm also by legal. And, you know, I'm a very collaborative worker in that I can bring people together to solve problems. And I also have budgeting skills and negotiating skills. And I work well with others. I think that I would get along well with everyone on the board and, you know, I am usually able to find lots of things that I have in common with just about anybody.
Thank you. So before I got involved on the town council, I spent eight years working as the head of a nonprofit. There was no Mammoth Lakes trail system, which you go outside, you see all the signs. That did not exist. So I worked with a whole lot of people, with town, with partners in the Forest Service to make that dream a reality. And it is a reality now. So I've worked outside of town, outside of government, for eight years. Since then, I've worked not inside of town, but in that role, the unique role that a council member plays, working with the town manager to direct and to steer the organization to reflect and to serve the citizens of Mammoth Lakes. And I've learned a lot. I've learned a lot. And I've learned a lot on the council side. I've learned a lot on the regional side, and I have a wealth of experience. I'm older now, which means I'm experienced, and I'm wise, and I know what I'm doing. And I just, I really feel compelled to stay in this. We've got a lot of very sophisticated programs and things that are happening. The housing program, we are well on the road. We've committed over about $80 million, which is not just the town's money, but these are significant projects. And it's going to require real leadership and real skill and experience to navigate this stuff. In many ways, we're just getting started with all these programs. I find it fascinating, interesting, exciting, compelling, and there's nothing more I'd rather do than to keep serving this in this capacity. So thank you.
Well, I think that one of the skills that I would bring to town council is that I have actually worked with the current council members. I first sat on the Parcels and Recreation Commission with Bill Sauer. And Bill and I are very different people, but we get along quite well. We don't always agree. I agree with Cleveland that it's not necessarily a good thing to have the town council constantly voting five zero. You want to have good debate. As a town council member, you're 20% of that body. So you have to be able to work with the other council members. You have to be able to work with and to direct staff to get the work done for the community. When I served as a commissioner and now, I feel that it's really important. We live in a community where your average person doesn't have time to go to Sweet C, attend town council, watch council meetings on television. So it's always been really important to me to be a liaison between our local citizens and our town government. Because if you're working three jobs, if you're raising a family, you're probably, you know, maybe you have time to read the sheet or the times, maybe. So it's always been important to me to be able to talk to the people that I've interacted with in the community, you know, being a volunteer in the schools, being a Girl Scout leader, just being out in the parks at AYSO Soccer on Saturday mornings. Those are, I think are the skills that I can continue to bring to the council, the perspective of the people living in the community who care deeply and who are most impacted by local government. Town council has more of an impact probably on people in this community than, you know, certainly regional, state, or federal government. So it's important. But it's also important that we recognize that this is a working community. And I would like to just continue to be that voice. Thank you.
Thanks. So I always say that your most important elected official in your entire life is your county supervisor. And we have our new county supervisor here today. We're very blessed that Linda stepped into that role. And I just want to say that, you know, I'm among incredible company up here. So there's so many wonderful people who care about this town. There's so many wonderful people on council and running for council. And it's hard, you know, it's a hard act to follow. Like Betsy's literally as entrenched in this community as anyone I've ever met. And I just want to say that, I guess for me, what I feel I bring that's a little bit different, because as I said, like, we have an excellent council already, is that I have experience at the, you know, in NGOs and nonprofits at the local, state, and federal level. And as we have this opportunity to try to bring more resources to Mammoth, you know, we were having a conversation just the other day that people forget about the Eastern Tierra. It's really easy to do. You know, Sacramento's not that far away as the crow flies, but it's not that close when they start to think about where resources are going. And I would just like to be able to help try to, wherever possible, use those connections to bring more resources our way. And the other thing I'd say is, like everybody else, I, you know, get myself out to the community and I will make sure that I really listen to people and bring all different types of people's issues together. And finally, you know, having been an activist in different capacities in my life, you know, the thing that really helps, and Betsy's right, like, we can't just assume people are going to roll up and come to every single town council meeting. But when it matters, we need to make sure that we are encouraging the community to make their voices heard. Because it's much, it's hard to listen to people fret on Facebook when they aren't showing up and then saying what their real needs are. And I have experience in really encouraging people to make those kinds of, you know, commitments to their own community rather than just complaining when something's already done. So thanks.
Just a line of that there. Chris? Question two. The town of Mammoth Lakes over the last eight years has received almost $50 million in revenues over budget. How do you believe those dollars should be spent?
Okay. So first of all, I think that the town council has done a good job of understanding what our community's needs are. So, you know, we all have access to what the council's priorities are. And the first priority is affordable community workforce housing. I think that that is something in the future, as we have funds available, that's something we should do. We know that for the parcel project specifically, and I think for all of the housing projects, for every dollar that the town of Mammoth Lakes is spending, we're getting back five and, I think it's five, yeah, dollars. For every dollar the town spends, we're getting money in federal and state support for those kinds of priorities. There's also a lot of different things happening right now. We know the mountain is providing workforce housing. We know that we're using things like Project Room Key, which I believe is sunsetting. But there's many, many opportunities. It's not just on the town. This is something we have to do with the state and the federal government. But I believe that Mammoth is really taking a lead and making progress where a lot of communities aren't. So kudos to the town for that. The second priority for spending funds is really about infrastructure. So there's going to be a lot of money coming for green and renewable infrastructure, and I wanted to come here. You know, one of my pet things is that I was really excited because there was a community solar bill at the state level that would have allowed us to have community solar. So you put the panels somewhere where it's not such a heavy snow load, and then everyone in the community can benefit. So it's not just single-family homeowners. It would be people in apartments, everyone. So unfortunately, the government didn't sign that bill. I'm mystified as to why, but that's the kind of thing that towns like Mammoth can really explain to the state government that we need that, or we're never going to be able to be renewable like we could be. The next thing is that I think it's really important that we continue to support infrastructure. So for example, in our downtown, making sure that transportation is accessible and convenient for people. Because is it possible that someday we could be a car-free or a lot less of a car town? I think it is, but there's just a few little gaps that we'd have to fill in. And then finally, you know, the fourth priority is about the kinds of community benefit that's necessary, like childcare. And we just had a voter registration kickoff in the park, and I met a young couple who moved to Mammoth a few years ago, really want to stay, but they're thinking of having another child, and they can't get into childcare. Now, we know that there'll be childcare at the parcel, but that's the kind of thing that, you know, a community is only as strong as every single person in it feeling like they have a place to sleep at night, you know, healthcare when they need it, you know, and the support of their community for the kinds of things that families need. So that's where I think about those dollars.
Thanks, Chris. I think that it's important to understand, first of all, that the $50 million isn't just hanging out there waiting to be spent. Most of those funds have actually already been encumbered by the town. One of the ways in which we've spent that $50 million is that during the pandemic, during the shutdowns in 2020 and 2021, the town is actually able to grant over almost $2 million in rental assistance and business assistance to help this community get through a very difficult time. So I think the way that the town budgets that allows us to do that is very important. Another really critical thing that's happened because of our TOT excesses is that all of the town's reserves are currently fully funded. When I first got involved in town government in 2012, that was far from the case. In fact, the government, you know, the town government had to restructure. We had to make some drastic changes in order to start paying the MLLA lawsuit settlement. So those are just a couple of the things that have already happened with that money. Another thing that's happened is that the town, so in the fiscal year 21, 22 budget year, $26.6 million in TOT revenue, which a couple council meetings ago, the town council actually just went through a process to allocate some of those funds. And millions of dollars are going into housing, which I think everyone in this room agrees is probably the most critical priority facing this community. So the town is doing the right things with those funds. Other things that may not, you know, be so much top of mind, but are for my mind, are that the town, since 2017, we've invested $1 million in deferred maintenance in our parks and facilities. Those are, you know, those are just some of the ways in which these funds can be spent, will be spent. So I think that the town is very much on the right track in terms of being conservative in its budgeting, and then that allows us to allocate these little wages to very critical community priorities. And I'll just wrap up this question by saying that I've been involved with Parks and Recreation on the state level. I'm the immediate past president of the California Association of Park and Recreation Commissioners Report Members, which is a horrible acronym. My, you know, my fellow board members that I'm lucky to be able to talk to and to find out what's happening in other communities around our state, a lot of my friends aren't commissioners anymore because their communities have had to cut their park and recreation departments because their communities were not as prepared and not as resilient with COVID and, you know, with economic slowdowns. So I feel that, you know, this is a great time to be running for town council because we are in a probably the most stable financial position that the town has enjoyed since incorporation.
Thank you. Housing is expensive. It is really expensive. And it's been such an interesting moment, being on the council. The ongoing debate in the community, well, all this TOT money's coming in, what the hell are you doing with it? You're squandering it, it's going all over the place. Housing. Housing. That's where this money's going. The other point that's important to make is that the way that the town budgets provides resources on an annual basis to deal with what the hell is next. Council meeting not too long ago, solid waste, a challenger shutting down the landfill of Monroe County, oh my God, we're going to have to, we need some resources to address that problem. These things come up constantly, and they come up consistently. The key point is that the council establishes priorities that are rooted back in the general plan, in the vision for our community. So we have a framework, a set of prioritizations. When challenges arrive, then we know where to invest, we know what the community wants, and we know how to make that happen. And we're very privileged to live in a community where we have a budget system that is now working. Through the bankruptcy process, that entire budgeting process had to be completely redone because the town council, the town before that, we're going to make all of our money on real estate development. Does anybody remember those days? Do we remember that? How did that work out for everybody? Yeah, not so good. And you had to go through a very painful transition, but we've learned a lot. And we've come out on the other side to follow up with Betsy's point, resilience. Our community, the town, which is serving the citizens, serving all of us, is a uniquely resilient endeavor at this point. And we need to keep that going. But housing, one last example I share. If the city of San Francisco was to do what we are doing in Mammoth Lakes, just as an analogy, they would have to purchase a half a square mile in the middle of downtown San Francisco and build 4,500 units of affordable housing. Does anybody think that's going to happen? Truckee would have to be purchasing a similar landmass and building 3,500 units. Think of that, how that positions. Think of that, how that positions our community going forward. For our resilience, for our economy, for our quality of life. We're in a good place. Thank you.
So I, with the fifty million dollars, I feel like I would definitely advise housing. And I know that you say that we're building housing. It's coming. I really feel like, how long are people supposed to wait? My son's kindergarten teacher recently got kicked out of her long-term rental. How long is she supposed to wait? Where is she supposed to live? We have less than one percent vacancy for long-term rentals. I bet it's pretty close to zero. How long are people supposed to wait? That's great that, you know, four hundred and fifty units are eventually going to be coming. There are eighty that will be coming in a year. You know, I look at it and say, hey, you guys changed the rules. In 2015, developers had to bill ten percent of their units. Had to be affordable housing. 2015, the town council got rid of that. So you know that Limelight unit that's going in? There are a hundred and forty-one units going into that. So fourteen of them, if it was built in 2014, would have had to been affordable housing. Instead, that developer's pays the town seven hundred thousand dollars. Is that enough to build fourteen units? No, it's not. So I think that we need to look back at those developer fees that have been changed. You know, I think that, you know, we could do things with nightly rentals. We could get creative. Tahoe is doing subsidizing, subsidations to landlords to get them to switch back to long-term rentals for locals and not just nightly rentals. We have people in town that, you know, that's their business. They're, they have five nightly rentals, and that's their bread and butter. And it's hard to acknowledge that you're hurting our town when your livelihood depends on it. We need to address the childcare problem. You know, people are not able to work because, you know, mom and dad have to split shifts so that someone can stay with their kid. And, and other things that I feel that we need to address are, you know, building up our infrastructure to manage the flow of tourists that we have here. You know, the lake space and parking is a nightmare. You know, we really do have a lot of parking problems in town that we need to address. Twenty twenty was a terrible summer for the outdoors here. And I still, sometimes I go hiking with my kids, and you see toilet paper. You know, and I know that different groups have done a great job cleaning up after irresponsible people. But I think that, you know, we really need to build infrastructure to manage this influx of tourism, of tourists. And then lastly, I do think that we need to take fire protection very seriously for our town. I know that, you know, twenty twenty was an especially bad year for smoke and everything too. And, you know, one of my big fears is like, when is a fire going to come and get us here? You know, people are living out on the scenic loop because they can't afford housing. It's not a viable option for our employees to live out of their cars. And it's very scary to me that one of their illegal fires is going to get out of control and burn down our town. So those would be my priorities.
So there's not enough people being involved in the conversation regarding the need to supply homes for people. The homeless problem that is building, badly building, so we just put a bathroom out there. And to me, that seems a little bit like enabling a lifestyle. They come up here without a plan, and all of a sudden, they're the burden of the town? We, we are now responsible for people who came up here without a plan? I'm not suggesting we turn them around and send them packing. No, we need to have, start having conversations with second homeowners. As my, my partner over here said, I, I much, I agree with this incentivization program of second homeowners, like what they're doing in Truckee, like what they're doing in Tahoe. We could bring programs like that here and incentivize second homeowners to rent in conjunction with the people that are employing them. As for instance, you take the mountain and their group of employees and staff that come here. You split the difference between the person, you know, you look at the rental agreement, you split the person between the rent that they're gonna have to owe between themselves. It's taken automatically out of their paycheck, and then the rest of it is paid for by the people employing them. I think that the mountain has enough revenue coming out every year to sustain this program. Obviously, I'm not a pro at this. I'm wearing as I go. I'm gonna adopt as I go. I'm hearing good ideas here, but you're in my right. If there's, if there's people I want to work with when they have sound ideas like this, this is one of, sound ideas that work for everybody. People that already have second homeowners, their second homeowners, they don't wanna rent the locals because they're not giving incentives. They look at the renters that live here. For the most part, they're coming and going in town. They're here six months out of the year. They're here just for a simple job, and then they leave town. Do you think they care in the six months of what happens in town when they're not here? A good majority of them don't. They're just back in college, doing their lifestyle, and then they come back here and they just play in this backyard, and they get paid to play here. So the people that employ them need to be held accountable for where they stay and what residents we create for them. Also, a lot of the sneak that I've heard has to do with the amount of funds that it takes to even break around and building houses here, or to do a remodel. And I've been involved in remodels for many, many years, seventeen to twenty years now. I can tell you that leaving two walls used to be the cheaper way to go in a remodel. That, that's kinda dwindling. That's not becoming the cheaper way to go anymore. They don't want building to happen anymore. They're raising the price of materials. They're creating a food crisis. Another place where we can put the money? A food bank inside of this county, if not inside the town. A food bank, a literal place to supply the people with food that we don't have to depend on to go outside the county for and sign onto more other programs that we don't get to read the small print on. The people don't get to read the small print on. That sums up that. I mean, there's a lot of places fifty million dollars can go.
Thank you. I don't want to say that this is a trick question, but it's just so, it isn't fifty million dollars that we have. It's just like, well, you got this. Let's go do something that we're, that we're supposed to be served. It's much more complex than that. I, I will say that the way that we've been going in Mammoth Lakes has been fantastic. When I first started serving on town council, it was the midst of, well, near the lawsuit, but we had to go for council member training. It was my first time, and people would see my badge and say Mammoth Lakes. And the question they would always say is, oh, the lawsuit. Every town in California knew about our lawsuit, and it was almost kind of a joking manner. We fast forward, you know, two, three years, and people are coming up in conferences and going, how did Mammoth Lakes manage to do what you're doing now, knowing what type of hole that we had in once upon a time? And I think it is because frankly, the town council and staff have just done a fantastic job with our money. So you could put any amount here, or of course, housing is the pressing issue that we just, and getting creative is that. But I'd also disagree with this question in that it's not just, if it was fifty million dollars that I could do with one pump, I don't know. I would probably build a really big arts and theater complex. So that's one thing. It's, but we do have to, and I said this before, we have to have our growing food before we can have our candy, in a way. So some things, I think, have been more for reasons that weren't contributing directly to the growth of the community. But I'm sure that anything that has been created is going to help people in our town. So, thank you.
Yeah, hold on to that, and we'll go to question three. Tourism is the economic lifeblood of Mammoth Lakes. MLT is doing an excellent job at attracting the visitors and the chamber at providing customer service training. What role does the town of Mammoth Lakes play in enhancing the visitor experience?
Well, I think that that just rolls right back into housing. I think that if you have people who have a certain level of comfort in their life, that they know that they're gonna be able to get a shower, put their head down somewhere. The main problem with our visitor base right now is we frankly don't have enough people to look after their needs. And I think my visitor experience, whenever I go someplace, is gonna be based on how I was treated. When I went around, are people smiling? Are they happy? And so I think just really working to have people looking after our visitors is the main thing, and the only way that we're gonna be able to do that is having, is having housing. And I think as a business entity, that that should be the most important aspect for, you know, with, with the chamber and MLT, is to make sure that we have a work base that can take care of our people.
Well, first and foremost, though, we need to create a welcoming, crime-free environment. Literally, right now, if I was to open up a bag of Skittles and dump it out on the table, and then take a non-labeled bag, like a clear bag, and drop it on the table, and if I were to tell you, this is Skittles, this is a no-name bag of Skittles. Well, what's this no-name bag of Skittles? It's called Fentanyl. It's candy-coated Fentanyl that's making its way around this country. And it's here in Mammoth. Fentanyl's a problem here in Mammoth, so the town considers itself a sanctuary town. You wanna protect your illegals. You wanna protect your, your immigrants. You can label them however you want, but if you're gonna protect them and call it a sanctuary town, then you need to take responsibility for their actions. And that means the crime that they bring here with them. And that's drugs. That's theft. That's B and E's. I pay attention to the reports. I read the reports. Do you guys go down and read the reports at the police station? Do you get online and read the reports? Do you do ride-alongs with the police? Are you talking to them directly about what's happening in the community? I don't hear a lot of that. I don't see a lot of that. I don't hear anything about ride-alongs from town council members and the police. All I hear is a back and forth between the chief and the town council, the chief and the manager. And I think they've done a good job to work a lot of things out. There's been a lot of problems over the last ten years. I think Chief Aldaz has done a tremendous job in reading the town of bad police officers, bad conduct on public officials, wearing a badge. I spent ten, fifteen years watching police officers and their condom and riding ships where they were wrong. And I'm finally doing that here as well. There's a drug problem in this town. It seems to be ignored. It's called Fentanyl. It's called methamphetamines. And not enough is being done about it. People that come here, they wanna enjoy their time. They wanna, they wanna enjoy the snow. They wanna have it at a hotel. They wanna have their kids safe. They don't want their car broken into in the parking lot. When they wake up and want all their gears gone. People are selling it for drugs, Fentanyl, methamphetamines. So if we're gonna be a sanctuary city, and we wanna promise tourists a safe place to dwell when they come and entertain their family, then we need to take responsibility for what comes with it.
Okay, I would like to say, I think the town of Mammoth Lakes, our main role in enhancing the visitor experience revolves around kind of solving the problem, solving the problems that tourism creates here. You know, we need to have good transportation around town. And I think, you know, the red line, the bus systems, ESTA and everything, those are great. I think we need to get people out of cars and, you know, get them walking around town. I love the sidewalks that are down Main Street. It's, you know, so much more user-friendly than having to walk down on the side of the road with no streetlights. You know, I think that those investments bring people on return visits to Mammoth. So, you know, I also think we need to manage the flow of people that come here. And that's, you know, another issue that needs to be addressed is parking. I think I said it before, with the lake space. You know, it's very hard to park there on busy weekends. You know, we need to make sure that people come to Mammoth and that they love it, and that they come again. Because if we just get people to come once, and like Cleland said, you know, there's not enough employees. People don't enjoy it here. You know, you have to wait two and a half hours to sit down in a restaurant because they're short-staffed. You know, your hotel room's not very clean because they're short-staffed. It's hard to, you know, you have, it takes you two and a half hours to get your ski rental because we're short-staffed. So I think that, you know, the town needs to solve the housing crisis so that we can have enough employees to support the guests that come here and, you know, to help them enjoy themselves responsibly and fall in love with Mammoth so that they come back. You know, and I would, I would like to say, I really love, in the morning, you know, I see the, the police waiting at the stop sign by the school. And, you know, yesterday, I think it was yesterday, basically a car kind of cut right in front of a pedestrian, and a police officer rolled him, and I think that's great. And I feel like, you know, the police in town are visible. They try to stop people from speeding down Main Street, and I feel well-protected in the town.
Thank you. So many good ideas that are being shared here today. I know council members, we've, a lot of these ideas have come through this. We've vetted these things. This is not the forum to start responding to all that, but believe you me, we, we've heard these, and there's a lot of great stuff happening in that. Specifically to this question, and the question really goes to probably the relationship between Mammoth Lakes tourism and the town. And this has been a really important and developing issue and series of opportunities. As I'm sure you all know, over the last year or so, the town, the town council has capped the amount of money going from Measure A to MLT. There was a challenge. It's loose money. It's going. So, okay, fine, let's do that. But a key part of that conversation was to define the roles and the responsibilities. What exactly is it that MLT does? And then what are the roles and responsibilities for the town to play in enhancing that visitor experience? This is a really, really important and developing effort that's underway, that we need to see this through. The town has certain critical roles. Obviously, the roles of housing, providing the workforce, that's critically important. But also the relationship with the U.S. Forest Service. As we all know, seventy-five percent of the land base of this town is managed by the federal government. The Forest Service desires a peer-to-peer relationship with the authority, which is the town. Okay, so that's a specific lane that we're in. The town has now established an office of outdoor recreation that works in close partnership with the Forest Service. The Forest Service nationally just went through a national hiring drive to try to get recreation staff, officers, and all kinds of other people. They're not beating their numbers. That's a whole other conversation. But we, as a community, have to step into that space and make sure that the experiences that people are having out of the ground is gonna be worthy of whether they come here once or whether they're gonna be coming here multiple times. Infrastructure, parking, roads, all that back-up house stuff that is uniquely within the purview of the town, that is on us. That is being defined, and council started doing that already. We're with MLT and others, and we're looking forward to seeing that through. There's a lot of positive stuff happening in that space.
Yeah, a lot of great ideas, some of which I know have come before council. I know some of which are, you know, very much being pursued. I know that the chamber has reached out to second homeowners about, you know, making homes available for a long-term rental. So I think it's important that we keep generating these ideas, keep having these conversations. The first role of the town of Mammoth Lakes prior to enhancing visitor amenities, which is a critical role. But the first role of the town of Mammoth Lakes is to provide essential services, right? Snow removal. Police services, you know, the health and safety. And that is, those have to be the first priorities of the town, not just for visitors, but also for locals. So, once the town has done those things, then we can move on to talking about some of these things. I agree. I think, you know, there's some great things happening with transit that we're gonna care about at council this week. Kind of making transit more user-friendly for our visitors, altering their routes so that it will serve the parcel. We will have two hundred and seventy-two workforce housing units coming online in the next twelve to twenty-four months. We all agree, it can't come fast enough. It can't come furious enough. Housing is a fundamental human right. People should not have to live in their cars in order to work in this community. I don't know a business in this community that's wholly staffed. But I also think that the town is doing the right things to try to make progress in those areas. And I hope to see that continue. The other thing that I think that the town can do to enhance the visitor, sort of visitor experience is also just providing great amenities. is also just providing great amenities. The kind of amenities that we are building in the town, like the community recreation center, you know, that is going to be a great benefit, not just for locals, but also for our visitors. And that's, you know, there's exciting partnership coming forward. So, those are just some of the ideas that I see in terms of enhancing the visitor experience.
There are so many great answers in it, I don't want to be repetitive. So I think that ultimately, you know, a healthy community where people know that they have a roof over their head, they have a place to take a shower, that they have their needs met, is the most important. And, you know, as Betsy said, the town of Mammoth Lakes first and foremost has to provide the services for the town, for the community. And I think that if we follow that lead, the experience will get better for the visitors as well. Because frankly, you know, if a town, if people in the town are happy and fulfilled and there's a lot of harmony among the town members, then you feel it when you come here. So rather than just repeat all the other great ideas, I would just like to say that that's really the role of town council. And, you know, I think town council's been doing that, and it's just our opportunity to continue to enhance that and address, you know, the belt in the room, which is housing. But again, it takes time and I don't, I have, you know, a friend who had just said to me this weekend, "If I have to leave my rental apartment because they keep raising the rent and I have to go back to living in my car to get ahead, what kind of place is this?" So I take that very seriously. This is people's reality. But I also think that, as John said, we're, you know, we're moving in the right direction and we have to just stick together as a community to find ways, to creative ways, while we're building affordable housing, to get people housed.
Okay, why don't we, I know we're running, it's after one o'clock, so let's move to one more question. And I think we'll skip number four. But, because like that could turn into a major debate among everybody up here. Number four was about large developmental hotel lodging parcels and whether the community would be, the town council would be in favor of developer agreements. So we could have a pretty extensive debate on that. But I do know one of the issues that really has come up, and it's a big issue for some of, I know my board members is, is the aesthetic impression of this community. How do you, how do you, you know, how would you describe the aesthetic impression of Mammoth Lakes?
So I've been asked this question before, and my answer was homey, because I hadn't heard it. You know, Mammoth is a real town with real people. This isn't a kind of place that was just developed as a tourist place. It's a real town that has had people living here for many, many decades, and as a result, like, the way that it looks is the way that it came up. But I would challenge anybody who drives into Mammoth, if you're thinking about our visitors, to try to take their eyes off the Sherwins or the mountain. You walk out of Vons, you're not thinking like, "Oh, what's the mall across the street look like?" You're looking at the mountain, like, what does it look like today? Is it, you know, is there any snow? What season is it? Are the trees, what are the trees doing? What, is there a storm sitting on top of it? So I would just start with that. I mean, I think that ultimately, we all would like to see some more cohesion, maybe in the downtown part, the part where we all are. But we also have to remember that those are the real businesses that serve us, where we go to run our errands and we go to get things done. And I think we just have to be careful because there's always unintended consequences to anything you do. And if we get too precious with how things have to be or look, will we really address the real needs of the real members of this community?
I would describe the aesthetic of the town of Mammoth Lakes as needs improvement. Obviously, we are a very small town in the midst of a truly spectacular, amazing outdoor environment of protected public lands. My favorite thing about Mammoth is that I can walk out my door and walk into the wilderness. There are very few communities on this continent where you can do that. That being said, most of our visitors spend a core amount of their time in our business area. And I'll never forget the first time that my mother came to visit me in the town of Mammoth Lakes, and she said, "Wow, this is like a town of strip halls." And I'm not saying that's bad, and I'm not saying that it's on the businesses. In fact, I think that's one of the challenges that we have between the town and the business community, is whose responsibility is it to make the town aesthetically pleasing and welcoming? Now, there's things that the town does well. You know, we put up flags for, you know, Fourth of July and Labor Day, and we maintain beautiful parks. Those things the town is really good at. We need to get to the point where the town and the business community are working together on things like how the appearance of Old Mammoth Road and Main Street. Roberto's looks beautiful in the front of it because Joni spends a lot of time making that space look really fantastic. So businesses are paying in to business districts to improve, you know, to provide that aesthetic. And I hope that the town and the business community will continue to work together to make this an attractive place throughout the community and not just when you walk out into the Sherwins or, yeah, out into the wilderness.
Okay, this is a very good question. I would describe the aesthetic impression as profoundly mediocre. No doubt, straight up, no way around it. However, let's say yes and. I don't know how many of you read Paul Oster's article a couple weeks ago in The Sheet, talking about the advantage that we have where mountain communities across America saw huge investments in their beautiful 19th century, precious gold-mining, Main Street communities. You go to those places, you want to find a place to live, it all starts with three-point or, you know, two-point. We're not there yet. I think our mediocre first impression perhaps gives us a real advantage. And there's a challenge to us now in this community. Our good friend, Mr. Collins, I don't know where he went, but made a very interesting and compelling presentation to council last week about the plans for the main lodge. That proposal, from what I could see, seems to fit. That seems like it could work here in Mammoth Lakes. And that starts triggering in your mind, okay, well, if that's going to be that, what are we going to be in our downtown? What are we going to be in our town? Because people are going to be driving through it to get to that. That's a challenge to us. We have plans that the council's accepted, we have adopted them for downtown revitalization. How has the Zoom world, the role working, and changed the opportunities to repurpose the workspaces that we have? What does it mean to be living in a Southern California subdivision, if that's the right term? What are those opportunities for mobility and transit transportation? How can we re-envision what our physical impression is, given the new world the world is living in? There are big opportunities there. We have to work together to figure out how to do this. Putting up nice flower pots is nice, putting up flags is nice, we're nibbling around the edges. The business community, town government, we have to work together to envision what our downtown core is going to look like. 450 units of housing, that's what, 1,000 people? I mean, walk up and down those streets and imagine there's going to be 1,000 people living in there. Where are they going to shop? Where are they going to eat? How are they going to get to work? Big opportunities. So we got challenges, but let's start from profoundly mediocre. I think we can raise the bar a little bit from here. Thank you.
I think they're going to eat at home, probably. So I would describe the impression of Mammoth as a unique, individualistic mountain town. I think that everybody's just kind of doing their own thing. And these buildings have sprung up over the years. I think that with our tough weather, you know, buildings, you paint them one summer and then the next summer they need to be touched up again. And it's really expensive. And so I think that it's difficult. I definitely don't want Mammoth to look like veil and have to be a designer city and everything looks like the village. I like that we're unique, but I think that there's room for improvement.
I would agree with that statement, there's room for improvement. Mediocre, there are some towns, there are some parts of this town that, I don't know how they continue to exist, so it's beyond mediocre. And the kind of money, you know, 50 million, again, I agree with her over here on my left, most of that money's already spent. We kind of have to do a joint incentive program for the stakeholders in the town to create the kind of change and to create a better appearance. The mountains are calling, right? I mean, that is what this town is known for, that statement, the mountains are calling. So let's make it a mountain town. Let's bring the mountains back in this town. We got to quit getting rid of trees. We got to quit zoning and destroying the environment in which people come here for in the first place. There's ways to do this, not by putting bathrooms in a homeless encampment. We need to preserve these lands and not kind of give an allowance for people to live a certain lifestyle of your, what we try to figure out a plan to fix it. I mean, paint works, staining works, wood replacement works, but a lot of the money should be put back onto the maintenance of the public sidewalk. For instance, right now at the corner of Old Mammoth Road and, there's a minute that goes down, all the way down to the highway down there, there's a little piece of sidewalk that looks like a little bicycle ramp, right there at the corner of, College Junior is right there, right there at the corner. Been there for two months. Two months. I'm no pro at concrete, but I know how to pour concrete. I know how to make those repairs. Two months, it's been there. It's kind of added to the mediocre look, right? So we should be on top of these types of things. There's a lot of things we can do that take rather than get out there.
As someone who has never had great eyesight, aesthetics are something that frankly I just cannot depend on at all to get a feel of a town. I am very pleased with all the new signage that has gone up that I can actually see where I'm going. We have a much better, you can find where people live, we have street signs, we have directional signs. So for me personally, I know that people have different opinions, and beauty is in the eye of the beholder, but in fact, as Chris said, when you're kind of in this area, I'm not really seeing the forest for the trees. I look at the mountains and I am more focused on what's around me than, I am not a big person on having a lot of signings around town. You know, we've had some banner things that we've put up. However, I think they're almost independent. I realize when I go past it, hopefully not hitting someone, that it was just merely decoration. So I'm sorry I don't have a good aesthetic, but I do believe that's just an independent. We're never going to be pleased, everybody, on how the way our town looks, so.
Well, as we're starting around a little bit of time, let's kind of maybe wrap it up. And Cleland, maybe you can start. Let's each of you take about three minutes, you know, give a reason why you think, somebody why they should vote for you, and we'll go ahead and work it down to this end and then be able to adjourn for the day. We really appreciate, and I want to thank you all for being here. This has been great. So Cleland?
Well, thank you for having us here today. It's, I don't, I don't know with, running for town council again, it's like I'm running into a burning building. And so I am not, I don't, I can't give you a great reason. I know a lot of my friends are just like, "Wait a minute, you said, if you ever said you're going to run for town council, to lock you in a room and not let you out until after the election." So I don't know what we can call it in my case, except for that of all the exciting changes that are going to come up. One thing that if I do get elected, I've been there, I've done that, so I don't get to complain about anything. If I'm saying, "Oh, we're hours," or this or that, guess what? I know what I'm getting into. And although that scares me about myself, I hope it does with you. So that's mine. So thank you for your time, everybody.
Thanks. And so for me, I don't necessarily look at it as a battle, because many of you have seen me in different lights throughout the last two and a half years. This is the only time you've had to get to know me, it's the only time you've had to see me in action. It's been different for all of you. It really has. My experience with you has been, you know, different for each second. I mean, I've participated in events of activism inside of the town hall, the town council building, the civic center, the police department, all of them have responded to me differently. And I'm an activist like any other activist. I have a dream, I have a, I have an agenda, a motive, if you will. And that motive is freedom and liberty. And if anything that's in front of me doesn't contain that entity, that purpose, I'm probably not going to vote. If it doesn't lower and make your life easier to live, if it doesn't enhance your life, I'm probably not going to vote for it. Because I'm here for the people. I'm not here for sensationalism, although I can stimulate the mind, I can, I can create very, very loud events. That's not my plan on town council. My plan at town council is to work with these people and to find a mutual ground that we can come to terms that benefit the people that live here. We all need to do some research here. We're up against a big, big monster, and it's much bigger than Mammoth, it's much bigger than Mono County. It's impacting the entire country, okay? They're coming here and they got bad intentions. They're destroying the family. God, country, family. They're destroying this whole idea. And that's what this country was founded on. And that's my principle, that's my principle stance. If it goes against your free movement, I'm against it. Keep me in line when you vote.
So I would like to say, you know, I am running for the families in Mammoth. I'm running for the forgotten middle that's getting squeezed out of town. You know, for all those families that have had to leave town because they couldn't afford housing here, or they couldn't find childcare, and they had to go. And I really feel that, you know, some people would only like to see young people in their twenties come here for a few years, work really hard, and then leave and not stay. And that's not what I'm about. You know, we have families here that work really hard, that need help, and they need a voice on town council. And I want to be that voice, I want to support our community. And, you know, I feel that we are, we should be able to build community together and come together and support our families and really, you know, not let them get squeezed out. Because that would be a shame, our town would die. All of our families leave, the schools won't have enough students, we won't have teachers, we won't be able to attract talented individuals if they, you know, can't find a place to live and don't have anywhere to send their kids. So I really want to be a voice for the missing middle. So thank you, and I hope you guys will all vote in November and pick me. Thanks.
Thank you. Again, it's really good ideas. I want to assure Cleland that, you know, they're cautioning you about a building on fire, it's not on fire. It's okay, we're not on fire. You've been on fire in the past, we're not on fire anymore. And I think it's so important, I mean, obviously, what the council does is on behalf of every citizen. That's what we're there to do, is to speak for those voices and make sure that we're implementing policy and providing leadership to the town manager and the staff that's going to fulfill the needs of the community. It's critically important to understand that we are an island. This is an island community. We're surrounded by federal land, as all the other communities are. It's only two incorporated communities in this entire region fisher than us. And so to understand how those dynamics work, to ensure that we are a community and not just a labor camp, this is critically important, that's what we're all trying to do. Housing, as I hope everybody understands, is in progress. This is not something we're going to start tomorrow, it is in progress. We need leadership, we need three council members. Certainly, I'm asking for your vote, but you got to vote, we have to vote for three people. Who are the three people among the six of us that you want to be up there on the dais with Bill and Sarah for the next two years? That's the decision that we're all making, yeah, very handsome. But it's three, it's not just one, it's three. What is the team that you want to see up there Wednesday nights, 9:30 and 10 with Patricia, you know, getting there in the glare of the first of lights? That's what's in front of us, that's what we're looking for, because we'll be there. I want to also bring up a couple things in terms of what's next, because there are things coming at us that we have to be thinking about. One of them is fire, wildfire. There's a very significant and important effort being led by a woman named Janet Hadfield Easton Sarah, I can never remember what it all stands for.
Running Communities Resilience Project.
Yes, Dr. Pearl is the back. A critically important effort that is unique in the state and is getting state attention. You may have not dug into the details of what happened in Paradise when that community burned to the ground, or what happened in Sonoma County. It's all there if you want to read and understand what can happen. We have an effort in this community to do things for Mammoth Lakes to save us from that fate. We need to be looking at that. The other thing to be looking at is regional... The other thing to be looking at is regional efforts that are underway now in Eastern Sarah. Chris mentioned the surplus is coming out of the state of California. There are record numbers of dollars coming from the state of California and from the federal government, and the state of California, for whatever reason, has discovered rural California. Huge opportunities are coming, where we've been ignored for decades, or as long as the state's been incorporated. These things are coming, and we have to be ready to engage with that. And finally, we need to really be thinking about energy. Solar, if you, all the things you're hearing about in Florida, you've heard about that one community that was entirely powered by solar, they somehow survived that whole mess. Their phones were working the next day, they could communicate with the outside world. We need to be thinking about energy and our resilience as we go forward. That's something we need to start paying attention to, and looking forward as we go down this road. So, there's three, pick one, thank you.
I think it's really important to have a sense of humor when you're involved in town cameraman. I've always appreciated John, so he's a little bit of a tough act to follow, but we have a rule in my family that if you don't vote, if you're not involved, you don't get to complain. And for the past 10 years, I've certainly voted, but I've been involved, I have a track record, I have done the best I could for this community. I care deeply about the people that live here, I agree with Amanda that, you know, this needs to be a community of people, and there isn't anything at all. If my family moved here today, I'm not sure we could afford to stay here. You know, we don't come from, you know, wealthy backgrounds, so we've worked incredibly hard to be here, just as every person who lives and works in place in this community works hard to be here. So, I'm very passionate about the town, very passionate about our community, we've talked about, you know, all the big issues here today, you know, wildfire resilience, we've talked about housing. The other thing that I really want to think about as we move forward is that, as the town continues to grow up, right? We're not that old a community, and so, people ask me, and I respond to this question, what does Mammoth want to be when we grow up? Well, I also want to ask, what's next? With our reserves fully funded, with the MLLA settlement, you know, we used to talk about that all the time, it's $2 million a year, we've had good years, so we don't talk about that so much, but as we continue to pay that down, we bonded Measure R, we're about halfway through paying that bond off, we bonded Measure R in order to build a community recreation center, what's next? We have tons of plans sitting on the shelves at the town offices, which ones are we going to attack? Which ones are we going to implement as a community? Is it going to be the crosswalks that are outlined in the trial system master plan?
Yes.
I don't know, I want to hear from the community. I have ideas, everyone in the council has ideas, the town staff, and I'm just really excited about our future as a community, and that's why I'm going to humbly ask for your vote on November 8th, your ballot should be arriving in your mailbox next week.
But you need to be doing paper ballots.
These are very tough acts to follow. First of all, I want to thank the chamber and everyone who's here for taking the time to care enough to be here and listen today. You know, like everybody said, you know what the issues are in town, I don't have to repeat them. We know that we're a tiny community landlocked surrounded by wilderness and federal land. So I think that what, and obviously I will hopefully ask for your vote as well, on or before November 8th, you know, this community has given all of us so much, I mean, nobody here, it would be here if they didn't, you know, just truly love and appreciate it. And I have the opportunity now in my life to be able to get back to this place that I love so much. You know, as everybody said, our future in this town is bright, as long as we protect ourselves from wildfire, and thank God for the ESC CRP, and that we make sure our community's housed, and that we build the kind of community that we all want to live in, where everybody feels safe, everybody feels welcome, everyone knows where they're going to sleep at night. I think that the reason I'm asking for your vote is because I have a long history working in corporations, but also in my own tiny consulting firm here in Mammoth, starting 16 years ago, and there was a time, you can all remember, where I had to download large files and I couldn't, because everyone had come to town and the broadband, you know, crap down. So, we've all faced these kinds of challenges together, but now, our state is figuring out ways to accomplish the last mile problems. So the digital 395 could actually be a positive for us, as long as we get those resources here. We know that, you know, the federal government is going to have to step up and do more, we can't manage all these federal lands and protect ourselves on our own. All of that is something where I hope I can bring to bear some of the, you know, experiences that I have. So, as I said, I'd be so honored for your vote, and I'm just delighted to see that for three seats on town council, there are six candidates, that's the sign of a healthy community, because we're having dialogue, people are willing to step up, and I just think that we should all be so grateful for that. And I want to thank everyone who's running, because putting your name on a ballot isn't easy, and I'm super grateful to everyone who did.
Please, give him a hand, thank you for being here. As Chris just talked about, I think anybody who's run for public office understands when the term "fire in the belly" comes up, and that's what you got to have when you're willing to put yourself out there in front of people, and be able to take the arms and the arrows that come from all directions. So thank you, thank you for taking that, telling me I got to be quiet. So with that, Rihanna, you got some announcements real quick, and then we'll adjourn for the date.
Great, so a few things coming up in our world, so we have business after hours, excuse me, next Tuesday, next Tuesday, October 18th, we'll be over at Sierra Jewelry Company, Mammoth Holistics, and Mammoth Prestige Property Services, Spots. Week from next Tuesday, two weeks from today, sorry about that. Also, was mentioned here today, we will be having Mammoth Disposal at our next community coffee on October 27th, and we'll kind of be covering all the different things that are going on at the Dunk, and with Mammoth Disposal. Also mentioned here, our customer service trainings are going to be November 15th and 16th, so if you own a business, or are a manager, or owner, we'd love to have you, all the information can be found on our website. And then last thing, our Business Excellence Awards Gala is on November 3rd, we're really excited to host it again in Canyon, should be a fun evening, recognizing our local businesses and professionals in our community. Voting is still open for our finalists in each category, we have eight different categories this year, so voting's open for another week, that'll close next Monday, October 10th, so get it in before then, and I think that's it. Thank you everyone so much for your time today, have a good one.